I'll call to order. We have a pledge by Councilman Bowman. Let's stand.
Please join me in prayer. Family, Father, we appreciate the opportunity to be here today. We thank you for this beautiful day and for the chance for us to come and work for the citizens of Shreveport. We ask you to look out for our city, our country, our entire world, even our city workers, our fire, police, as they're out there in the trenches every day doing what they do. Help us to make good decisions and give a lot of thought to what we do. Amen.
Amen.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm looking at you. Generally, we should be out here in about 30 minutes. Let's get started.
I hope you're right. I hope you're right.
Madam Clerk, will you please call to roll? Present.
Mr. Bradford.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Dinkins.
Mr. Corbin.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Okay, thank you. I know we anticipate another to come in, but tomorrow I will be entertaining a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference of January 25th, as well as the regular council meeting of the 26th. Now, we have, if there are any awards recognition to guess by the council people. Are there any ones who have anybody they wanted to recognize? Okay. And the mayor?
Not to date. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, let's move on to reports. Anybody have any questions or comments from Mr. Green regarding property standards? No, Mr. Green, we've been looking forward to you later in the meeting. Okay. Crawford, tomorrow, you'll be prepared to present those reports.
Certainly. The revenue collections plan and implementation reports were provided to the council last week via email. Hope, trust you have all those, be able to answer any questions you have tomorrow, Mr. Chairman.
Are they already out? Because I don't remember.
Yes, sir, I should have. Got an email last week. I'll be sure and check to make sure you got it.
Okay, I get it. I'm balancing four email accounts.
I understand. If you don't have it, just let me know and I'll be glad to receive it.
I'll review it so I can get back to your office this afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And even though Mr. Sweeney is here, we got your report at the last meeting.
Yes, sir. The city attorney also wanted me to make this certi bond report he is sending you at this moment, so she should know that in any event. He got caught up in the council meeting pre meeting.
Yeah, okay, we'll get him today.
He had to run upstairs. He'll be right down.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Councilman Everson, we will be having a master plan committee meeting.
Yes, the master plan committee meeting did, that we've kind of been talking about having set for a while, was set, I believe it is the 18th at 10:00 AM.
Yes, so the 18th at 10:00 AM, we'll be having that meeting. I appreciate them confirming that date.
Okay.
The 8:00 AM?
At 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. 18th at 10:00 AM.
And the MPC comments.
Okay, thank you for that. Tomorrow, we're having a public hearings.
I don't have any items to add to the legislation and we don't have any public hearings that I'm aware of.
Mr. Flurk, you said no?
No, no confirmations or appointments at this time either.
Okay. Mr. Crawford, will you continue in the agenda?
Yes, sir. Consent agenda legislation to introduce routine ordinances and resolutions. Resolutions, there are none, there are no ordinances as well. To adopt ordinances and resolutions, Resolution 22 rejects bids received by IFB number 16-003 Wallace Avenue and 62nd Street area sanitary sewer improvements. Resolution 23 rejects bids received by IFB 16-004 Union Avenue and West 72nd Street area sanitary sewer improvements. Resolution 24 declaring the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus. Resolution 25 authorizes the mayor to dedicate a corner of Wallace Avenue in Cheatham in honor of Mac Henry Snowball James. Resolution 26 is to recognize the Mardi Gras crews of the captains' council of Northwest Louisiana for bringing the great traditions and culture of Mardi Gras and other social activities to Shreveport, Louisiana.
Okay, are there any questions regarding these items?
I have a question about the overbids.
Okay.
Yeah, Robert.
What's the next course of action?
Okay, Mr. West, we can address those. Hopefully rebid and get some lower bids.
With regards to Resolution Number 22, bids came in at $800,000 over the estimate for the job, almost doubled the price of that one. And for 23, the bids came in at almost a half a million dollars over the estimate of construction for that particular project. So we are revising and relooking at the project and see what we can do in order to get the cost of construction down.
Is there a particular aspect of the, is it materials or?
We're going to be using a newer construction technique. It's relatively new from that standpoint over what was originally bid for the project.
Council lady.
Okay, we'll just wait.
Okay, thank you, sir. And let me, no, I'm sorry. I need to back up. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. There is an item that's on the agenda that wants to be spoken to, and I'm going to move back to that, council privilege. And that's Mr. John Hubbard, who want to speak on Resolution 27. Mr. Hubbard? Yes, please come forward and give your name and address. You have 30 minutes to make your remarks.
John Hubbard, AEP SWEPCO, office at 428 Travis, Shreveport 7101, and my home is 430 Town South Drive in South Shreveport, 715.
Yes, sir.
We are having ongoing email dialogue with the MPC and seem to be some difference, however, some distance between our perspectives on things meshing up. There have been some documents shared back and forth, and I have taken the latest, I sent, I think, something to them replying to one of their documents, then they replied to mine, and I am circulating my draft, if you will, throughout AEP SWEPCO, and have highlighted my latest comments, and so we're trying to get those back in the right, what we view to be the accurate way we, the way we do business and the oversight and management that we get from the Louisiana Public Service Commission. So we're hoping to, it's hard to serve multiple people that want to manage the world, and our charge is to serve our customers, and right now, we, our mindset, we're some distance from being, having a unified thought on that. And the, there have been some pictures circulated that, I guess, demonstrate, were intended to demonstrate the way we trim trees. That's, those four pictures, two of those came from Longview, Texas. And to get a little technical, we have capital dollars and O and M dollars. O and M dollars are a little more discretionary versus capital projects where we build long circuits or big power plants or whatever those, and our, it took O and M dollars to get that tree out of the circuit, and then we then took capital dollars to remove that tree. I'd do a two-step process, but it was cheaper for our customers to do it that way, and that's the way we did it. And there's another couple of pictures of the same tree over around the Duck Pond, and that was trimmed by transmission crews for that major circuit that ultimately gives reliability to Port as well as downtown Shreveport and beyond, so. And I, I don't know, I've got way more questions than y'all do, I promise you, but if you have questions, I'll be glad to respond to them.
Anyone have any questions?
I do.
Councilwoman Mink?
Is this up for us to vote on tomorrow? This resolution?
Resolution 27? Yes.
Okay, so are you all at an impasse, or are you all still going back and forth?
Well, from my perspective, we're some distance to having a unified thought. There is, there is a feeling seemingly from the MPC that they still want us to submit plans to our trimming plans, and they'll get back to us within 10 working days, which keep reminding them it's 14 days when you count weekends. And we are governed by the Louisiana Public Service Commission, and we have mandates on reliability, we have mandates on how we serve our customers, and, let me be, it's hard to serve two masters, one that says you've got to get it done, and the other needs, says you need to come say, may I, and stand in line till we get to you. That, nobody, from our perspective, the way we've been doing business for over 100 years, the customer comes first, and that's our charge, and doesn't seem that that's the mindset that we're currently talking with.
I think that's a little unfair of a characterization. I apologize to interrupt. I mean, it is accurate.
Well, let me, because I know both of you all are going to have a meeting, right? The master plan committee representatives, correct?
No, we're not invited to anything like that. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but can you all kind of take this up and talk about it a little bit more? I haven't seen any of these emails. I don't even know the status of things other than, you know, since we last met.
We're going back and forth to MPC currently.
Right, so I don't even really know what the issues still are and where, you know, where they've moved to, where you all have moved enough to be voting on it. And then the other thing is, you know, the UDC, I guess as a whole, is going to be voted on. And can this be handled at that time as opposed to now? Because I'm just trying to understand where we are and why we're, would be voting on this now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point.
Ms., well, Councilman Corbin, will you yield to the author of the resolution?
I just sent the one to say I withhold my comments until the Resolution 27 comes up.
Okay, all right. Councilman Corbin.
You know, I know that we're a city that loves our trees, and I think that's a good thing. Many of our older neighborhoods have very mature trees. I got calls the end of last week concerning the Crew of Highland Parade, where trees were overgrown in the street to the point that there were concerns about floats being able to pass through the route. I know that we have to trim trees for, on our bus routes. Two weeks ago, and Mr. Hubbard may have a comment to make about this, a new development there on 70th Street related to Whole Foods, they were planting large trees directly under existing power lines, which tells me that a landscape plan was not thought out as well as it should be. But, you know, you look at these pictures that Mr. Hubbard's provided there at the Duck Pond, and these are big trees directly under power lines. You know, that's, that's an issue. Does that mean you need to cut every tree down under power lines? No. But some decisions have to be made about, if we have mature trees that are in power lines, is it better to carve that tree up into something unrecognizable or cut it down? And I think the bigger question comes back to, does AEP SWEPCO follow the rules from the Public Service Commission? Are we going to add another layer in there? And I just want to be sure that we think this out. My understanding of this resolution is just, we're encouraging, we're encouraging some actions. We're not actually putting language in the UDC or anything like that, but, you know, in an old city with old neighborhoods like we have, trees are going to be an issue, and we don't need to make this harder than it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Everson?
I'll just say briefly, I mean, I certainly see both sides to this argument. I see SWEPCO obviously wants to cut trees as timely as possible. However, I do think SWEPCO is not acknowledging very much of the role of the MPC. I mean, the MPC does also serve a role and does serve customers, they're the same customers but from a different vantage point. You know, your heart doctor and your auto mechanic don't do the same thing for you, and they're not always going to be doing the same thing, but they both play a role in your life, you know? And so it's not that they're not being customer friendly, they just provide a different service. And so I do hope that we can figure out a way that we can accomplish what the end goal is amicably without additional problems or consternation, but, you know, understanding that there is some desire to have some accountability as to where the, where trees are cut and how they're enjoyed in our parks and along our public right-of-ways. I mean, people do care about street trees, and we can't diminish that altogether and say, by caring about street trees, you now have damned us to all have power outages all the time. I mean, and I think some of the language, at least in the exchanges that I've seen, has been very heated. I think we can step back a little bit and say, look, there's a rational way we can accomplish this goal without overburdening anyone. It's just my thoughts on it, and I mean, I haven't read the latest set of responses here, but, I mean, I just feel like there is a, there is some, certainly I understand your point of view. I also understand the goal that they're trying to accomplish, which is to respond to the desires of the citizens to have, you know, some consistency in the way trees look around town. So, I mean, there is, we can't completely dismiss their goals, but we certainly want to pay respect to y'all's concerns as well. So, I mean, I just think that's worth mentioning.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Hubbard? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Let's continue regular agenda legislation, Mr. Crawford.
Yes, sir. Resolutions on second reading and final passage are which will require only one reading. Resolution 10 supports the completion of Interstate 49 through an inner-city corridor. I think that's been postponed till March the 8th. Is that correct, Art?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Resolution 20 authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Caddo Parish sheriffs relative to the use of network fiber. And Resolution 27 requesting the MPC to ensure that public utilities subject to the jurisdictions of the Louisiana Public Service Commission are exempt from the vegetation and tree trimming limitations in the proposed unified development code.
Any questions, Congress, regarding these items?
I'd like to speak in reference to Number 27. What I was offering here is a resolution in symbolic. It holds no authority, but I thought that the issue in Section 10, under 10.5A and B and C, I had some issues there with, during an emergency location, and also the planning of, requiring the utility to come up with an annual planning plan, a pruning plan. And I felt that this is, it's just too much to ask the power company in particular to give a annual pruning plan, because it's just not realistic in my opinion. And then the pruning plan in Section C requiring 10 business days. Those are the issues that I had. And what I'm trying to say is, Councilman Corbin, Everson have pointed out, I want us to just have some dialogue. This should be resolved before the UDC comes to the council in the final, that's what I'm really saying. And so I hope that the MPC and SWEPCO can get together and get this resolved before the final passage is offered to the UDC.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other comments regarding these items?
I wanted to ask, is someone here from MPC?
I'm sorry?
Is someone here from MPC?
Sure.
Well, you all may need to catch me up, because all these emails you're all referring to, I haven't seen them.
Yes, ma'am. What can I answer for you?
I like to get the emails that you're all passing around.
We certainly can forward that on to you if you request, and we can get that to you today.
Are you all at an impasse?
I would say it's not an impasse yet, and you've got to remember something, I just want to make it real clear. The MPC will not be reviewing any utility pruning plans at all, ever. That will strictly be up to SPAR and the Public Works Department of the City of Shreveport that will review those plans. We have no active role in this. It's just simply a part of the UDC as a regulation or a concept. And so understand that that's a reality there. The other thing is, you've got to remember that we didn't make this up, and we didn't go to California or to New York to find this provision. We actually just went down the road, and in Baton Rouge and in Denham Springs, they do the same thing with their utility companies, and have not had a problem. And also remember, the 10-business-day turnaround is a very short turnaround. It merely gives Shelley, as well as Michael Wood, the opportunity to see what's going to happen. And I would like to leave one last thing to say, is these utility trimming, these tree trimming plans are already in existence. SWEPCO already plans out months in advance where they're going to trim with their various crews, and so we're only asking to get a chance for Public Works and SPAR to look at those plans before trimming begins, because there may be some alternate things that could be done that would appease not only the concerns of the citizens, but also make certain that the trees are not into the power line easement areas that the, that they're concerned about in serving the customers.
Let me ask this, because I just left a meeting with Michael Wood, and I'm not sure if he needs anything else to do. So from an administrative standpoint, adding this to Shelley and to Michael Wood, how would that work?
Of course, I can't speak for them, but I know, I think Shelley's here.
Well.
And not that you need anything else to do either, Shelley, but.
Let me, let me do this, let me do this, Shelley, before you come up. I, I want to correct, and not necessarily correct, but I want to say that the department here works for the administration, for the mayor. And it appears to me that if there's any issues regarding the directions or the responsibility that would be given to anybody, the mayor or the, and the chief administrator should be the one that given those directions. So, I mean, what a department here, Kenny, cannot assume is not my preview, it's your preview. So I'm asking you, as relates to the question from the council lady, can you answer that? You refer that to the department?
No, he asked her to come up here. I'm going to ask.
Oh, you asked her?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you asked her.
No, he asked her to come up here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, this, this is one of those, the 10-day review period is actually just the review of their pruning plan. And we've already received the pruning plan from SWEPCO for this year. They sent it to us after we had our meeting with the mayor, and we were able to review it and see where they were going to be trimming, or they proposed to be doing their preventive maintenance trimming. This has nothing to do with power outages or emergencies or anything like this. This is just, and probably for us at SPAR, it began, I mean, we're going through the same thing with another agency that's wanting to cut trees. We like to know before you start cutting trees in our parks, on our right-of-ways. Some of them have been planted by citizens, some of them have been planted as memory trees. If those are going to be cut or trimmed or planted in the wrong spot, we want to be able to communicate that before SWEPCO comes in and cuts them down. That's really all we're asking, is to know. We're not asking to approve their plan. We're not asking to, we don't want to slow them down. We did have a project in Greenwood Cemetery this past year. It took us almost a year to resolve it, because we were working with people who had raised, quite frankly, almost a million dollars for that cemetery, and we wanted to find, try to find any solution we could before we cut the trees down, and ultimately, they were cut down. But it's knowing that kind of information ahead of time so that we can help, and we may could have avoided how long it took to resolve that issue. And like I said, we've got the planning, pruning plan for this year. I understood where SWEPCO was coming from, when they said we, we make a plan for preventive maintenance, and they need to get on that plan and not be slowed down, and we said if we could look at it, we could help you with that process. So it's not a, really, and if something was to change, they would let us know, and if they didn't hear from us in 10 days, they could just keep moving right along. So it's not to put any more burden on them, but it's just a communication tool, is all we were hoping it would be.
You have any other questions? Councilman Flurk?
Shelley.
Yes, sir.
Help me understand now what you, if the power company has an easement through the city park, they have an easement, have a line going through, they still got to ask you before they trim that line?
I don't, I'm going to be quite honest with you, Councilman. I'm not sure what are easements or right-of-ways or what they say. I'd have to get a question. We, we were discussing easements and right-of-ways today, and I learned some things about them that I didn't know about, so I don't want to, that might be better for Mr. Bradford to answer. But, like I said, it's more a communication tool and being able to communicate to our citizens who are going to be affected by the trimming.
Shelley, if you would allow me, I'd like to ask the city attorney to respond to that.
Good afternoon, council members.
Good afternoon. We do have a franchise agreement with SWEPCO. We allow them access to our right-of-ways and to use our right-of-ways for purposes of their business. That's been a point of discussion between SWEPCO and our office, has been, the franchise fee agreement allows for maintenance of their utilities and facilities. And so the discussion has been whether or not the agreement prohibits the city from adding additional requirements. My interpretation has been that we allow them to maintain, we have no, and as I understand the UDC proposition to be framed, we do not preclude them or prevent them from doing their maintenance. So it's not a change or an alteration of the contract, it is more just a request that we be informed and provided some notice of their pruning plan, which, to my understanding, has been, according to Shelley, provided for this year already. So that's, that's my interpretation of how the agreement is written, and I think that the UDC.
Well, besides the, excuse me for interrupting, besides the franchise agreement, do we have easement agreements?
They have a right, they have a right of use of that right-of-way. They can come in and plant poles or what we call their facility, their, whatever you need to make, power poles, power lines, any underground work that they need to do in our right-of-way, so that they can provide power to their customers and to, frankly, the citizens of the city of Shreveport.
So we have a franchise agreement, but yet the UDC is going to dictate the terms? Is that the way you see that?
No, sir. I think the franchise agreement under the provision provides that they are afforded the opportunity to maintain their facilities.
Okay, thank you.
The UDC, as it's written, as I, as I read the provision, is asking them to just make us aware of their maintenance schedule. It doesn't prohibit them from maintaining their facilities.
Councilman, take it.
Let's just go back to maybe a more pragmatic answer. Do you feel the language that, I'll say, is being proposed is necessary or unnecessary? I mean, do you think the way the UDC is currently proposed is appropriate, given everything you know about the agreement, or do you think what, I'll just call it, what SWEPCO is proposing or where their issue is, is really more relevant?
And I'll, I'll give you a pragmatic response. I think from a city's perspective, I understand what SPAR and Public Works are trying to accomplish, because we have a customer base just like SWEPCO. We have a responsibility to the citizens to keep them informed and communicate with them. And that provision, if passed through the council, again, this still has to come before the council, if passed by the council, affords those departments additional opportunity to communicate with the citizens that they serve. And so when you have this, this language in the UDC, it allows them an opportunity to say, and I think Shelley uses a good example with Greenwood Cemetery, not that the city is going to prohibit SWEPCO from going in and doing maintenance, but it does afford them, as a department, an opportunity to speak to the citizens that will be impacted by that maintenance.
So I, you're in favor of the UDC?
I, I, from a legal standpoint, I think it can be written into the UDC. I think that the council has ultimate discretion as to whether or not it is kept in the UDC.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just.
If you please.
Take me back for one minute. Actually, you know, there is no requirement that they give us the plan, but since they do the plan, it would be, I think, prudent for us to see the plan.
I'm courtesy to let you know.
Courtesy, so we can see the plan, because, and I've said this to the officials at SWEPCO, we serve the same citizens that they serve.
Sure.
And I'm not, I'm not pro UDC, because y'all have to prove that. I don't get a vote. I don't get a vote. But I would say that there are citizens that have invested quite a bit in trees. But when it comes to emergencies, what I've said to our folks, we can't interfere in what SWEPCO needs to do. They have to take care of making sure that we're safe, and that we have, you know, that we have the power we need. And so, the plan is just, really just a courtesy, if they will, you know, give that to us so that when people come after us about why this tree got, needs to be cut down, we'll be able to respond intelligently.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Councilman, ever seen another question?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I think we were just talking about the legality of it, and then this packet that was just passed out to us. I do see there's a, there's an excerpt from the franchise agreement that says, "All the construction and other work, including reconstruction, maintenance, repair, and removal of the granting systems shall be subject to and in conformity with the ordinances, rules, laws, and regulations now enforced, or that may be approved and adopted by the city council of the city."
That's exactly right.
So, I mean, there's no issue of legality? I mean... No, I'm not asking about... I mean, was that, I thought that was the question. No, the question was, was more in favor of one set of adding this language or not. Okay. I thought you were asking if it was legal in terms of, with the franchise fee agreement? Conflict of the franchise? Did it conflict with the franchise fee agreement? If that was the question? Maybe I was, yes.
Your question wasn't pragmatic enough.
I was just saying, if the question, I'll rephrase what I was saying. If the question is, is it in conflict with the franchise agreement, that answer, according to this, what I just read, seems to be no. It's not in conflict. But that doesn't mean, that doesn't say anything else to the merits of it or anything, just if that was the question, that seems to be the answer.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And let me, let me just ask, Mr. Swinney, you, and you can, you don't have to, I'm just going to make a suggestion. If the emails that has been transitioned between you guys, that are relevant to the council, not only to Council, Council Lady Lynch, could you share them with all the council?
Absolutely.
If it would help us get more clarity on what discussion has been?
Yes, sir. And it'll kind of show you how it's progressed along and where the differences still lie. But I will certainly provide that to all council members at y'all's request.
Thank you very kindly. Okay, Mr. Crawford, we may continue with the introduction of resolutions.
Introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to February the 23rd, 2016. Resolution 28 authorizes the donation of Shreveport Police Department property tomorrow. Council, the administration will ask this resolution to be removed.
Okay.
Resolution...
Poor dog.
Sorry. Resolution 29 authorizes the mayor to execute telecommunications franchise agreements. Resolution 30 authorizes the mayor to execute agreements with various entities relative to supplemental payments for ambulance services provided to Medicaid patients.
Okay. You have, yes, councilman?
Just the one question. That is our kind of annual contract that we've been doing for the last three or four years? It's just the update of that every year we have to do?
This is, this is actually a new document that, are you talking, which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about the ambulance agreement, EMS.
Yes, I'll let you, Scott, talk about that.
Yes, so that's a yearly contract that we enter into every year, that the mayor executes with the ambulance alliance, to receive those upper payment limits back from Medicaid reimbursement.
As part of the EMS?
Yes, sir.
System. I mean, when we started, it made us change our budgetary process essentially, as a point in sight, just want to make sure this is...
Yes, sir.
We're not going to have to change our budgetary process. Again, this is essentially the same as the way we've been doing it.
There's a million dollars set aside in EMS's budget to make those prepayments, which we receive those payments back in addition to the supplemental payment. So, it's a going out, but comes right back in's way.
Okay.
I understand it works.
Julie's actually the one that worked on the contract. Julie, do you have anything to add?
Just to add one little bit, got a little exercise coming up here. There is a little bit of a new part. The program has expanded to apply to managed care. And I think our payments had been going down some as more and more people got into managed care. So, it may all come out relatively the same. There is going to be, I think, a catch-up payment that will pay a little more and will get a lot more. But it is basically the same program, but I just wanted to throw that in, that it's, there is that slight variation.
Okay.
The good thing about the program is, we get about a 60% return on our investment there. So, we participate, we get about 60% back more of what we put into the program traditionally.
Do you take outside contributions for that 60% return? Or is this just a one-time?
That's, I had the same question this morning. Individual contributions, I was going to sign up.
Yes, it's good.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, thank you. And any other questions or remarks regarding these items? Introduction of ordinances, Mr. Crawford, may we continue?
Yes, sir. Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to February the 23rd, 2016. Ordinance 7 amends the 2016 Airport Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 9 amends the 2016 Capital Improvements Budget for streets, drainage, and the GIS system projects. Ordinance 9 authorizes the mayor to execute a lease of city-owned property to the Red River Valley Railroad Historical Society. Mr. Chair, tomorrow, the administration will ask this ordinance to be pulled as well. Ordinance number 10 closes and abandons alleyways between the 1600 blocks of Clay Street and Alston Street and Cut Cliff subdivision in section 35, T-18 North, R-14 West. Ordinance number 11, closing and abandoning a portion of the Sand Beach Boulevard between 70th Street and Fern Street in section 20, T-17 North, R-13 West. And ordinance number 12 amends the 2016 Capital Improvement Budget, appropriating the funds authorized therein and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments regarding these items? Councilman Jenkins?
Okay. So, question number one, is there a map of, for ordinance 12? This is expansion of CC Antoine Park?
Right.
I mean, no, there wasn't last night. If there is one today, I'm happy to acknowledge that I have it on. Okay, because aren't we expanding the footprint of the park? Is that what the proposal? Basically accepting the order that was set aside for it.
That deals with expanding the CC Antoine Park area. I'm sure we have some kind of drawing. I don't have it with me.
Okay.
But we'd be glad to obtain it for you.
If you don't mind just sending whatever...
Bond me a break tomorrow. She'll be here tomorrow, she'll have it for you.
Okay. No problem. Because it's only, it's only on for introductions. So, that was my first question. On the Airport's Enterprise Fund Budget, ordinance 7...
Right.
And I guess this is maybe for Charles, but it isn't that much money, but it is coming out of their reserves. So, it doesn't affect any of these, way we did this new bonding deal to start pulling from the reserves already?
That's correct. It's coming from the annual reserve.
Understand, but one of the reasons we kind of got in a little problem with our refinancing some of those bonds is because, obviously, we didn't have enough reserves to support. Now, I know this is only 50 grand, or, I mean, only 50 grand, but do we have that concern?
The first line of meeting the coverage is revenue over expenses. And the airport is charged with charging the airlines enough money to cover that debt service. So, that's the first line of coverage on it.
Wicked or whatever, yeah.
Right. And if that doesn't cover, then you go to the reserves.
Okeydoke. Okay. I mean, of course, it should count as an expenditure though, right? When you spend the money?
Well, it's going into capital, so it'll actually come back as a capital contribution. That's a capital project is being spent on.
Okay. And then, there was a typo on one of these, and I'll tell you which one. It says, I think it's the capital budgets one.
What are you saying?
Says that it doesn't, I'll find it, so, sorry. I'll give, keep going with that, man, I'll tell you. It's something about that it says, "Nothing is in, but it's a double negative," so, okay.
Okay. Let me, let me mention ordinance number 10. This is, this is a project at the Mount Canaan Church. And we've been, you know, they started the construction, they had to halt that because they didn't get the proper permits. And I want to see if we can expedite this in any way from here. They was patient to go through the MPC. Mr. Swinney, can you give some clarity on what we can do?
Well, as far as expediting, that's a question I have to defer to our city, Assistant City Attorney, as to whether or not it would be able to handle another one reading. I'm not sure of that question.
Okay.
It's an ordinance, we would need two readings.
You have to have two readings? Okay. But, so, administration, Mayor, if, once we go through the second reading, if we can sort of execute this ordinance, so we can get it, get it to Mount Canaan, so they can continue with their construction site.
Yes, sir.
But give me some clear understanding on what was the issue with this alley?
Well, there was a question about whether or not there were any utilities in the alley. There are no utilities present in the alley. And because of that, we were able to close and abandon the alley without retaining any servitudes. They were expanding their buildings, and they needed to make sure that they didn't have any underground facilities, so that no servitudes would be retained.
I see. Okay. So, everything is, I mean, everything is clear, that we can move forward with this process?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay. Okay, Mr. Crawford, we're going to move forward with the ordinance on second reading.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Ordinance on second reading and final passage, numbers are assigned to ordinance numbers. Ordinance number 4 amends the 2016 Grant Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance number 5 amends and reenacts section 90-306 of the Code of Ordinances relative to reserved parking spaces for the handicap. Ordinance number 6 is a zoning ordinance, case C-1-16, amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. The City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by amending the extended-use zoning of property located on the west side of Yuri Drive, 75 feet north of Albert Avenue, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, LA, from B-1 SPI-3-E, buffer business commercial corridor overlay extended-use district to B-1 SPI-3-E, buffer business commercial corridor overlay extended-use district limited to the cat rescue boarding facility only with revised site plan approval.
Any council members have any comments or questions regarding these matters?
May I tell you that this case has been officially withdrawn?
The case has been withdrawn?
Yes, and I gave a copy to Art, and I have a letter here. The applicant, the initial intent to put the cat rescue facility, they decided on a different location, and the owner of the property does not want that restriction on their property, so they want the case to be terminated.
Are you referring to the clerk?
I gave a copy of the, of the letter to Art's office about an hour and a half ago.
Okay. Well, the clerk will handle it properly, okay? But thank you.
Tomorrow, we'll have to withdraw, we'll ask you to withdraw.
Yes, sir.
Make it to council.
I'm sorry to learn that Councilman Jenkins lost his cat house.
Don't say that.
Stay aboard on that one.
Sometimes it's better not to respond.
Anyway, we appreciate, making us aware of that.
Better let sleeping cats lie.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, we have any table isolation, any one of you guys?
I'm not aware. We have 118 that is going to be withdrawn.
None? Okay.
None.
All right. Well, we're almost on schedule. But appeals, we have any proper status appeals today?
We do have one, Mr. Chair.
We have one. Who's this you did in? I had, I had, I thought I, I thought I...
This is yours again.
Oh, no.
I thought I referred that to one of my council members, because I was preoccupied. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right. This case today is 3815 Cornell Drive. We brought it back from the last time to have the owner secure. They have put the garage doors up, the front doors on, the windows are secure, and we can close it out.
Wow. Yeah, nice.
It's nice.
What was your recommendation?
Close it.
That's a move.
Second.
Any discussion? All of them ready to vote? Vote, please.
Good work, Councilman Bradford, that was, that was...
Well, it was your suggestion.
That was really, yeah.
See, that's why, that's why we need help out here.
I had to wait for that to come up.
End vote?
End vote, please. All those in favor, close it out. Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Seven zero. Thank you. Okay. Any other fields? All righty. Well... Reports from Officer Board's Commissions. Anybody want to report anything today? Okay. I was waiting for the sidebar to stop. But you can, I'm sorry, our distinguished clerk, can you give us your report?
Mr. Chairman, I'm very happy to make the following report. The mayor has two appointments. One for the chief building official, Mr. Gary Norman. Happy to see Gary again. He was a city employee before in a number of capacities, and it's good to see him come back. For the, she's also appointed for the division manager for athletics, Mr. Jaren Jones, who is the favorite son of Gary Mudry. So, we're happy, Gerard Jones.
Gerard, absolutely.
To see Gerard is on our list also.
Okay. All right, Mayor, thank you for these...
And both of them are here.
Both of them are here today.
They are here.
Yeah, if you would like to see them.
If they please, suggestions come forward. I just want to meet them.
Mr. Norman and Mr. Jones, will you please stand? Mr. Jones and Mr. Norman.
Okay. Will you come down for a second? The councilman, when I ask you a couple questions, if you don't mind.
Did we get, I just had a question. Did we get resumes on these?
Yes.
We did? I don't know where my mail is.
I think we just, I don't know if your mail's been like mine lately, but I've just had an onslaught of mail. So, I can, I can be guilty of overlooking some stuff when I get that high of a volume. I've had a lot the last couple of weeks. But I did get these.
Yeah, I did too. I think I'm turning them out.
But I tell you, I've had so much, I could have lost them to Jones.
Mr. Jones?
Come on up to the mic, Jim.
How you doing?
I'm fine, hello. First off, I want to thank the mayor, the CAO, and the council for having me here. Ms. Shelley Raygo, the director of Spar, for putting me in a position to possibly have this. So, like, thank y'all for the opportunity, and I guess, thoughtfulness that y'all thought of me, to be able to do the job. So, I would like to serve the citizens of Shreveport in my capacity.
Are you currently with what?
Correct. I'm currently the superintendent of athletics over the athletic division of Spar.
What do you feel you have to offer this new position?
I think that the position is sort of the next segue into what I've been doing. I feel that I'm trying to make sure that our kids and our recreation development understands that sporting builds character. We want to make sure that we keep it in the sportsmanship frame of the world. But, you know, we always want to give our citizens a way out, a way to be healthy and active.
Good. All right, any other?
That's a darn good answer.
Well, I...
I mean, that's a good answer.
Councilwoman Litch is on the board.
Is he replacing someone, or how's that work?
Shelley.
Yes, that position has been vacant for about a year and a half, and George's been serving in it. And when, by the time we wanted to do confirmation last year, we put a hiring freeze on, so George's been serving in this position. And really learning and gaining a lot of knowledge and a lot of abilities to lead.[1748.33] And really learning and gaining a lot of knowledge and a lot of abilities to lead. You know, sometimes we have all the skill sets, but leading is even a different, and he's done an outstanding job over the last eight months in leading that division. And I will tell you that last year, the athletics division is about five people, and he's down to two. So he and one other young lady, all the resignations happened after June, and the two of them ran our football series. Everything else, the two of them, with a lot of people chipping in to help, but they've really done an outstanding job. And we're really fortunate to have someone with that kind of work ethic in our department.
And if I could just piggyback, I did put a hiring freeze on after we discovered we had about a $2 million budget hole, and we had no choice. So there were positions that we did not get a chance to fill because of the restriction on our funds.
I see.
And so now, we do need to fill those, because we've got people that are working two or three jobs, and they haven't complained, but we do need to provide them with, you know, the help they need.
Good, I appreciate that. I appreciate this young man, he's very articulate, very intelligent. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Jones? I'm sorry, councilwoman Flurry?
Mr. Jones, I want to congratulate you this afternoon for this position, and I want to remind you that Mayor Tyler has set the standard bar high for all of us in serving the people. And I heard you say kids, but you also deal with adults. And sometimes it's just being a good listener, but I wish you the best and congratulate you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Norman? The clerk said you served in many capacities. How many?
Actually, I came to work for the City of Shreveport about 21 years ago as a chief building official and over the buildings, permits department, as well as the codes enforcement department. So I was there for about three years, and issues came up with SPAR, and moved over there and served in an interim capacity for about a year or two, and then was, got the permanent appointment, was with SPAR for about seven years. And left, went to Knoxville, Tennessee, served as their chief building official and zoning administrator for six years, and then came back to Shreveport. Wife and I both have aging family members and felt the need to get back a little closer to home, to be able to care for them. So that's how we ended up back in Shreveport, been back about five years, and certainly looking forward to the opportunity to plug back in and, you know, try to lend the experience that I have in with the employees and working with them to try to provide the type of service that our citizens deserve.
Fantastic. Well, you know, even before I became elected, your name always resonated throughout the City of Shreveport as a very efficient administrator, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming back, and Mayor, thank you for seeking such a high-quality individual.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure he's going, and I trust that you'll do a great job.
Glad to have you.
And any other questions for Mr. Norman?
Did you say, hey, Gary, how you doing?
How you doing?
I think the last time I saw you, you were at Airport Park at some program over there, but you say you've been back five years?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Good to see you.
Been working as a general manager for Stevens and Floors. It's owned by my family.
Okay, good to see you.
Any other? Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Looking forward to working with you. All right, any other?
Assistant Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Flurrie. All right, we're going to go down here in a little bit. Additional communications? Madam Mayor, do you have any?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Not today. Not today, thank you, sir.
Thank you, all right. I know we got through a lot of monograts events over the last couple of weeks, and I'm hoping that we can, this is what some of them tomorrow, that's the only one. Mayor, I have a question, if you don't mind. And I was copied in an email from a citizen to one of your department heads.
Okay.
And I'm going to broaden my conversation, if you don't mind. I, as a, as a, as a, at my day job, I am responsible for subordinates. And I'm responsible for, even though I don't do their job, I'm responsible for what they do. I mean, I mean, if something happens without my knowledge, I should know, I should. And that's what I'm going with this. I'm asking you, in regards to citizens, or even this council, requesting service of your department heads, how do you feel about that? What's your position on that?
Well, you know, Mr. Chairman, you know, we try to follow the city charter, section 4.26, which really identifies, you know, kind of the protocol. But what I've said to citizens and to council members, if you should go directly to a department head, and that's okay, just copy us on it, so that we will at least be responsive and know, you know, what's going on with it. It's hard for us to be accountable if we don't know about it. So whenever we get requests, we try to make sure, number one, that we assess if it's an emergency, we try to get to it immediately. If it's not an emergency, we try to make sure we prioritize how we do it, because we get requests from all of the districts. We get 200 or 300 requests a week, and, but we try to get to those that are considered emergencies, we try to get to those first. We only have so many resources, so many employees, but certainly we are responsive. But to answer your question, we need to be copied, my CAO and I need to be copied on those requests, if you're going to go directly to directors.
My concern with the email that I, that I was tagged on is that you was not copied, it was from a citizen.
Okay.
What would you expect your department head to do with an email? And they responded, that's why I was concerned. I'm like, my, my day job, subordinates.
Right.
I would, I would not want them to respond to anybody who's not, who's not their superior.
Absolutely.
So what's your, what's your position on that?
What we've said to our directors is, you need to always let us know what it is that you're doing, because we'll be asking you to do things also, and everybody else will be, so that we don't show any preferential treatment to any individual, any business, or any citizen. We try to make sure that we're in the loop on what's going on, so we can be accountable to every citizen. So what we've said to our directors is let us know, even if, we want you to respond, because we are citizens or in it. We want to make sure that we're providing the services, but you need to let us know. And they know that. Every, each one of them knows that, so, so, you know.
My last question, it may, may not be, but I want to ask you this, and I'm guilty of it. I've sent, I've sent requests. I usually go through the clerk when I want a request for service, but I have went directly to the department heads. If each one of us sent a request to you at the same time, which one did you address first?
The one that came in first, unless it's an emergency. I mean, that's, that's how we do it. Unless it's an emergency, we try to look at, when it came in, and, and, you know, go ahead and try to take care of it. And if we got people who can do so many at one time, we do that. I mean, we, we are responsive. We have crews that can respond. It depends really on the request. You may be requesting something from Public Works and somebody else, Councilman Jenkins may be requesting something from SPAR. Well, we send those out, and they just immediately put them on their list, because in our office, we have a complaint coordinator, and we get those calls every day. You get about 10% of the requests, actually. We get the other 90%. They either come directly to individual departments, or they come to our offices. A lot of them come to my email address, okay? And so we send those to the department heads. They take a look at the workload and what they have going on, and the number of people they have to respond. If it's an emergency, I say to them, let's see if we can take care of this immediately. Send somebody out immediately if this, if it's an emergency. But that's how we do it. But you only get about 10% of the requests. We get the other 90%.
You get 200 a week on an average basis?
At least, at least.
And 10% of those come through us, and 90% come from citizens?
Absolutely. Yeah, we get about 300 or 400, I'm sure. But, but you know, we have our regular work schedule based on our objectives and our goals that we're trying to meet. So we're not sitting around waiting on people to send us requests. I want you to know that.
Hopefully, they're not sending emergencies on emails. Hopefully, they don't use email as a source for emergencies.
They do. You'd be surprised. Oh, yeah.
Well.
Yeah, they do.
I know, but I mean, hopefully, you can only hope. That's not a viable solution.
I know, but they.
It is a shame. I also hate to butt in, I'm sorry.
That's a conversation with the mayor.
When people send me requests for dire need on Facebook, I'm like.
On Facebook?
I might not necessarily check Facebook at every instance. I mean, there are maybe better ways to get my immediate attention if you have an immediate need, you know, but everybody has their own communication style, I suppose.
Yeah.
Hey, Mayor, I say my follow, this is going to be my follow, of course. And again, I'm looking for clarity, you know? I was taught back in high school, may have been elementary school, I'd rather ask a dumb question than make a dumb, you know? So, expectations, what's, what would be, and I guess it goes by emergency, non-emergency. You, you would evaluate the requests and determine whether it's emergency or non-emergency. But in regards to getting it, getting it, getting it administered, what, what would be a reasonable time for, say, for instance, a pothole getting fixed? If, I know you got potholes all over.
Everywhere.
But if I, if I got a citizen call, and I did this morning, and they said, you know, and I hadn't submitted because I was busy all day, submit that on Lanier Street, there's a, there's a pothole that the residents are complaining about.
Right.
How, how do you categorize that as a, as a, as a request?
Well, if it comes to me directly, I get it to Brian Crawford, who is my CAO. He'll get Robert, no, I'm sorry, he'll get Mike involved.
Okay.
And Mike usually will, you know, if somebody is available, he'll send somebody out there. But I can, you know, that's how we do it.
How to evaluate or how to fix it?
It depends, and we'll let Mike come up and just answer that one. Come on up, Mike.
Mike will send it.
So that you can kind of get an idea.
Most of our, most of our requests are Public Works related, are they?
A lot of them are.
Or Public Works Streets. Yes, sir.
Yeah, on, on potholes in particular, as soon as I get that, I refer that on to streets and drainage. We've got two pothole trucks that are working all over the city all day, every day, and they'll get to it just as quickly as they can. Normally, if you call me with a pothole, it's going to be done that day, unless it's too big, and it's something we have to go back, dig out, and put back later. But normally, when you call, we're going to go out there that day or the next.
Okay, I mean, but if, I mean, you're not, if a crew is in the area, I mean, it's more, it's more to get done quicker than they're not, is that?
Certainly, yeah. These right down the street, of course. But like I said, those pothole trucks, that's all they do, and I've got two that are all over the city all the time. Like Councilman Flurry's called me from time to time and said, hey, Baird Road's in bad shape. Well, I'll, I'll contact Public Works, the Streets and Drainage Division, and tell them that we need to go out to Baird Road and see what we can do.
But, but if, if, if the trucks in District E or in District D.
Maybe tomorrow before they get.
And I want you in District A immediately.
It may be tomorrow before I get.
Maybe tomorrow, okay. I just, you're not going to just take.
If you call, he's waiting for Friday.
You know, let me, let me say this, thank you, Mike. We, we just don't pull somebody out, out somebody else's district. What we do is, unless it's an emergency now, you know, I, I, you know, we, I mean, we get caught in between all the time, but we have a lot of potholes. Our infrastructure's in bad shape, and we've been, and we're dealing with it. I just want you to know that. But our folks are out there every day trying to address those needs as quickly as possible in everybody's district, and I just, you know.
So I just want to be clear, and I am finished asking a question, and I'm asking the council to, as a common courtesy, to at least, if they're going to do a request for service, that they will copy you and, you and Brian in that.
Yes, yes, sir.
In that email.
And that way, we can be accountable and make sure our people are responsive.
One clarification, Mr. Chairman. Are you saying that like the 321 emails I got this year, I need to send to Mr. Thompson?
No, 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 no. We talked about last year, the best process in which we feel comfortable in getting, in getting the request to the, to the mayor. Okay, I'm going off of my training. When I, when I sent, the only person in this, up here on this podium that I had a hand in hiring was this man. So he's the only one I can hold accountable. Okay, everybody else, I can't hold accountable. So if my requests don't get to the right hands, and my service is not rendered, then I can, I can call Mr. Thompson. I can't call your department head. Same way within my, again, structure in which I work my day job, is that if, if it don't come to me and go to my subordinates, then I'm going to be responsible anyway, but I can't respond intelligently about something I don't know about. And, and I want Mr. Thompson to know what I'm doing, so that, again, there's a, there's a buffer in between me and you, because if it doesn't get done, then I'm going to ask, first I'm going to ask Mr. Thompson, did he email, did he get the email? And then he will follow up with me, because he does an excellent job in, in the way I do. And everybody may have their own process of doing it, but if it's an emergency, then I usually go, but I always would have him involved, because he, he works for the council. And nobody else worked for the council but Mr. Thompson. And Mr. Thompson's staff worked for him, so if I even went to them, I would go through Mr. Thompson, because I won't circumvent Mr. Thompson to get to one of his, one of his people. And I'm saying, and that's the way I operate. So I just want it to be fair and get an understanding how you want to operate, and I'm just, if, it's basically what we're doing, but, but as a consistent basis, you're requesting that you are, your COB tagged into the email, so you will be understanding what's going on with your people.
Absolutely.
Okay, are there any other communications? Any other communications? Okay, are there any public comments at this time? I have no, no forms? If not, this administrative adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Is that what it says?